Trustee on the agenda tonight, results of bids for fire alarm control system. And we've got no bids. We're gonna have to re-advertise.
That is for the village office first?
No, that's for the maintenance building, the office, the little office building.
Yeah.
And the substation.
Yeah, okay. Did something say though that we did or didn't have one at the village office?
We got one at the village office.
We did, okay, alright.
Village office, library, fire station. All got one of our systems.
Okay. So what can we do now?
If we've been able to get out again, what happens? You know, get on, do it ourselves? Well, I called the guy from my law, they did all the specs on it. There were some problems with the way we put it out or something.
Oh, really?
And they didn't, you know, because they will not install it. It's all they're gonna do is the engineering, right? The blueprints and the specifications are for, you know, like you need X number of feet of wire, you need this, you need that, that, they're gonna do all that, they'll do the package. But they don't do the installing. And our own people can install it because if they install the one in the fire station, library, and village office.
So I was wondering.
So he's supposed to send me some, some wording. That's the best I can tell you at this time. So, there's no action when we need, I'm gonna give you the heads.
If you're gonna authorize me to go out to bid again, then you need to make a motion.
Yeah. So if, anybody wanna make a motion to go re-bid?
We'll make that motion, we'll go re-bid.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. There is any discussion?
Are these, so these, the two names here that are on the list, that would be, again, the only?
No, we can get more, that's the only two that we can pick up at the time.
Oh, okay.
That we sent that through.
But maybe once we retool, we might have possibility more, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other discussion? There be no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Second thing on there is the bid for shot rock. We have three bids. I kinda like to talk to Brian, but we gotta read the bids.
There were three bids received for this contract, the shot rock opened this afternoon, yes, today, today, excuse me. Sharp Rental Center was fourteen sixty-five per ton. They did have deviations, they put in that they, the stone will consist of zero inch, six inch, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty inch. And we had required the one foot to two foot size. Their total was thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Graymont out of Plattsburgh was, their total was thirty-eight, four thirty-four with no deviations. And Bedard excavating was thirty-two, four fifty with no deviations.
I kinda like to talk to Brian, but I guess this is timely fashion, so if we can't talk to Brian tonight, obviously he's not here, I'll make a motion to accept the Sharp Rental Center contract for fourteen sixty-five a ton for thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, well, that doesn't expect, does it?
Just amend, just amend, just, I got a motion by Jefferson, trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? Discussion is, the problem we have here is that FEMA has dictated what size rock we put. That's what we went out to bid for. Now, whether or not they'll allow this, is something we'll have to check into. And we're gonna award the bid pending, okay?
Since Tim is here, the way I read the bid is that you either have zero to six as one choice, twelve, no?
No.
Oh, it's all next, okay.
Yeah, and I can get one to two foot. But they're gonna end up picking through the pile a little bit more to give me the one to two foot. But what actuality, what we're gonna be doing is that, I know FEMA wants one to two foot, but we did the same thing across the lake. We brought them anywhere from zero to six inch, eight inch, twelve inch, eighteen inch, twenty-four inch, three foot, three and a half foot, in the dump truck. Come right out of the, come right out of the side of the bank. So basically they blast it, whatever falls, that's what you get. But when you put one to two foot.
It's too big a range.
Well, it's one to two foot is, do you guys want one foot and two foot material? You know, because see, now it's gonna be a choice of picking that out of the bank. The shot rock going in for what you need, that's what's being used on the causeway here, same thing, Gaines Marina, around Isle of Wight, all the same, the same stone. You're gonna get, you're gonna get a bulk of the, the one to two foot, two and a half foot, three foot.
Just to say, we can award the bid pending what FEMA says. Make a quick phone call tomorrow.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, I'll, we'll award the bid to Sharp Rental pending the okay from FEMA tomorrow.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There are no discussions, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Open the meeting to comment for the public at this time, anybody wishing to address the board may do so. There be no one to address the board, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, regular meeting of September nineteenth, and special meeting of September twenty-one. All that copied. Who remembers, is there any additions or deletions?
I just have one addition. On the, it's the meeting of the Wednesday, September twenty-first.
Yeah.
There's a mention in there about requesting, my requesting a recess to go into executive session to discuss personnel issue. There probably should be a line that no action was taken during that executive session. Is there completeness?
Yeah.
It's right in the middle of the second page, Carol, of the twenty-first of September. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended of the two previous meetings, September nineteenth and September twenty-first.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. Alright, I said, hit me, hit me like the other thirty-four.
There's only two of them, actually. First one is Plattsburgh paving, the amount of fourteen thousand, seven ninety-six. That's paving down at Veterans Park. And the other one is to Luck Brothers for twenty-six thousand, nine fifty-eight fifteen. That's work at the memorial circle and topsoil for Veterans Park. And that also includes the one thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollar, eighty-five cent credit for the imprinted concrete quality.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Okay, the first letter I have, Dear Mayor Rivers and Village Board Members, I own and operate Lakeside Coffee in Rosas Point, and I've been in business for almost four years. I love working in this community, I'm happy to report that we continue to grow despite the current economic climate. I believe that Rosas Point has tremendous potential for growth and would hope that it continues. I am aware that decisions will have to be made by this board regarding current revitalization project and future economic development. As someone vested in this community, I would like to share some of my opinions and observations. If it was not for Melissa McManus' position as our community developer, I would not have established my business in this town. She was able to provide me with assistance with local contractors, grant application, hiring employees, statistics about the village, and access to the revitalization plan. My hope is that you will strongly consider continuing to use her valuable services. I am aware that budgets are tight, but I see this as an opportunity and an investment for the future. I think it is so important to have this role for future growth, especially if we want to see Rosas Point becoming thriving community. This is not just on my mind, but also on the mind of other business owners in this community. Therefore, we are forming a group to brainstorm and share our thoughts and hopes for the future of Rosas Point. This group consists of folks that are proud to be a part of this community and want to see more for this village in terms of business development. At some point, we will come to the board with our thoughts and ideas. On that note, I would like to share with you what my customers ask or comment on repeatedly. The number one question I get asked, especially in the summer, is where can we stay in Rosas Point? Unfortunately, since there is not a proper hotel here, I refer them to the islands or Plattsburgh. I would like to see people be able to stay in Rosas Point and spend their money locally. Several hundred people have commented on how lovely and beautiful this village is. We have sent so many people to the scenic pier, and I know that has become the backdrop for several weddings and proms. Every summer I see more and more cyclists stopping at the shop and passing through. Many take advantage of the renovated parking lot. I sit on the tourism committee for the Chamber of Commerce. Tourism is going to be heavily promoted in Clinton County, which will include Rosas Point. More and more people are discovering this area for outdoor recreation such as cycling, paddling, and fishing, as well as agritourism. I see this as a great opportunity and potential for Rosas Point, especially since the infrastructure and the assets are already in place. Good road conditions, late in the vote launch. Respectfully yours, Chris Deuce, Lakeside Coffee. Okay, the next layer I have is, Dear Village Board, please accept this as my resignation from the position of school crossing guard effective October third, two thousand and eleven. That's Mary Natale.
Any motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept Mary's resignation. Second.
Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Roberts. Is there any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion, most opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is, Mayor Rivers, thank you on behalf of the Board of Education for installing a new sidewalk in front of Rosas Point Elementary School. The district appreciates this enhancement to the community, we value the positive relationship of the village of Rosas Point. This is sincerely Peter Turner, Superintendent of the School. And the next item I have is from the Rosas Point Fire Department. The Rosas Point Fire Department respectfully requests permission to apply for the following grants. The two thousand and eleven FEMA Fire Act Grant, the amount of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for the purchase of updated Jaws of Life equipment. This grant requires a match of five percent of the grant amount of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty. The federal share is equal to thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four, and the village share equal to two thousand, eighty-six dollars. The second grant is also the two thousand and eleven FEMA Fire Act Grant, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for the purchase of a new fire engine. This grant requires a match of five percent of the grant amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. The federal share is equal to two eighty-four, fifty, and the village share is equal to fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Thank you for your attention to this request, Junior Moore, Mayor Chief.
We have to act on that. That's first I heard of that.
Yeah, first I heard of it was when I read my mail, but I'm talking, I'll talk to Junior about it, but I think, I mean, if we can get a Jaws of Life for two thousand dollars and a brand new fire truck for fifteen thousand, that's the deal.
Well, you gotta approve it so they can go out. That was one of the things the honorors picked up on us, is that we did, somebody's grants the board did not approve, and we went out without it. The board has to approve it.
So this is just for them to apply to get the grant correct?
That's generally gonna get it.
Yeah, that's correct. And our portion would be about seventeen thousand dollars, and we get a new set of Jaws and a new fire truck. That's the deal, I'll make a motion that we allow the fire department to apply for these two grants.
Second.
Moved by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, actually. I know I haven't spoken to Junior about this either, because I didn't pick this up today, but do we have any idea when we would need to come up with the matching money? Would it be, for example, in the next budget year? Is this something that we plan on budgeting through?
I'm sure, because it's.
Oh, yeah.
By the time it gets awarded and everything, yeah.
You won't see the awards.
That's an assumption.
You won't see the awards until after the first of the year. And then it goes several months, because this is throughout the whole United States.
But it's just something we wanna be mindful of then, when we're preparing the budget for the next year, that if it passes tonight, we have to make sure that we fund it? Because I thought, George, one of the other, also the point was that we, I don't think necessarily that the board has not approved going out for the grant, but that we would put a maximum local contribution on them? So is that something, our sin, we would have to do a resolution on? Or would that only be after they rewarded the grant?
I would think after they rewarded the grants.
Because you may not get the full.
You may not even get it.
You'll get what you apply for.
Because that would happen, okay?
If they, they have a board of people that sit there, and they go through these things, and they look at the need, the need for, they're looking to replace the late 1958 truck.
I was on that truck a couple weeks ago, the top bed is robbing.
I'd like to pay the first truck off before we get another. I don't like having two, it's like having two car vehicles. That's the only thing that I can see, I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it, but we got one, we still gotta pay off first, so I don't know if it's a good time to take on any more debt, so I don't know. Just look at it a little bit more.
Well, I'll tell you this, Brian, you better jump on it while you can, because the FEMA grants are not going to be nasty.
I'm not inclined to spend any more money, right now.
Fifteen thousand dollars for a new bumper?
Yeah, but still, they paid for the last one? No idea, no idea, George.
About three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Well, for the last one, just within the last ten years.
Yeah.
And how much we own?
Well, I haven't got a clue.
Our sin, maybe, just, we're doing it on you still. So I'm not going even fifteen thousand, seventeen, whatever they have right now, I'm just really, let's balance the books first, that's what I wanna do.
Do we have anything in reserve, our sin, that we have been putting away for the purchase of a new fire truck?
I, you know, I believe so.
We just put away what, five thousand?
I'm not sure how much per year.
Five, I can't.
We got about ten thousand.
So there's.
Almost got enough.
There's.
Because I think, I think he's also looking at taking it out of current appropriations.
Well, that was gonna be my question, whether or not it would be something that we could shift around.
See, that would be something, that would be something that you would do at, when we do that resolution, but if we don't even get the grant.
But that would be something that Junior would also consider?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe so.
Okay.
It's just a thing, if these grants are available, we, I say like, George, we should jump on them while we have an opportunity, even though it is fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. I think it's a great opportunity for the village to get a new bumper. Like I said, I was on that, the other bumper a couple weeks ago, a little top of the trucking, it's just a matter of time before they pull the plug on that thing.
Well, and if we have ten thousand in reserves, that would go a long way for paying that share, so.
Should be able to get about five to seven thousand, maybe even more for that truck. Nineteen ninety, you got a new diesel engine. Anyway, take the motion. Second, any other discussion? There be no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Hope so.
Motion's passed.
That's it for me?
What else you got, my guy?
That's it.
We have a budget modification. Is that next on? Yep, budget modification, resolution.
You wanna start with your agenda, the supplemental, first?
Right, yeah.
Well, you gotta authorize me to go out to bid for a skid steer first.
For what?
Authorize me to go out to bid for a skid steer, I thought you're.
Oh, oh, sorry. Need a motion to authorize the clerk to go out to bid for a skid steer loader. And what that is, is it's for the electrical department. And what they do is they take the, you know what they do, they take the skid steer that the electrical department's got, and send that over to Public Works, and they take the old, oldest skid steer they got and trade it in. So it's gonna be a trade-in.
To money the budget?
Yes. Yes, there is.
Thirty thousand?
Buy the loader, attachment, whatever. I don't know what to buy. Brian and I talked about it. That's the first I've heard of it, I should know before we work.
Instead of going for.
Well, we're going for a skid steer, not a loader, that's what it says.
Yeah.
Wait, what is that called?
A loader, a new sidewalk, sort of, in the meantime, attachment for that machine.
Oh, 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 I gotcha, okay, okay.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the clerk to go out to bid for the skid steer loader for the electric department.
Move by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Roberts. Is there any discussion?
And this is, you said, we're gonna.
The discussion I got is, is this under state contract?
I don't know. It may not be state contract because they're trading in. We're not gonna get slapped with that, because if you want it, you can go out to bid.
Yeah, I believe you can go out to bid, but.
So have, so Carol, you said, no, it's not state contract?
To my knowledge, it's not. That's why we're going out to bid. If you were going state contract, we wouldn't be going out to bid. We wouldn't have to.
But is there an advantage to going state contract?
If the price comes in, and I don't know what they are even looking for, so.
Price is almost equal for the skid steer, and going out to bid or buying it.
We know those.
It's lower. Well, yeah, what I'm saying is lower. Brian's already got, because we're gonna get about ten grand, I think, for trade-in. So that comes off the price, so it's been a hell of a lot lower than state contract.
Yeah, the state contract will take the trade-in.
It'll take credits.
So if I go out to bid, you're, you know.
I understand that, but, and that's, that's something that is a legitimate way to handle.
Oh, definitely, definitely, yeah.
You write that right into the bid. You write that right into the bid.
That's what I have. It's legitimate.
Well, definitely.
You put it right, you write it right into the bid, goes trade-in.
Okay. And then, so we're, you said before, the, so the current, the electric department currently has one that'll go to Public Works, and then the Public Works one will be the one that we trade in?
Yeah, the oldest one we got. Any other discussion?
And it's something that we, we absolutely need to do at this time?
Yeah, they got ones costing a lot of money, stock to repairs.
Okay.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. At this time, I would like to appoint Charles Roush, Roush, as an officer in the planning board, and I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next thing is budget modification. Go for it, our sin.
Whereas the Board of Trustees seems advisable to make certain modifications to two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve village budget, be therefore resolved if the treasurer's authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the village budget for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Under the general fund, we are going to increase account five ten estimated revenues for two thousand one oh seven. Increase account five ninety-nine appropriated fund balance for one thousand six sixty-three, and increase appropriations account nine sixty for three seventy-seven, three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And this is moving the monies around for the van stand, for the garage door, or for the door out.
That's it? We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the budget modification.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
For the mayor of Oat Town. And on my agenda this past week, I had the invitation to go to Utica to attend the American Planning Association New York, New York Upstate Chapter, to receive an award for planning an excellent installation, and build a Rosas Point downtown water for our revitalization plan. Well, I was pleasantly surprised considering that this is the award, and it's first place in the whole state of New York, except New York City, which we hope that somebody will cut up off Long Island, let it flow out. But anyway, it was, it was a very nice motion. There was people from all over the state there. I was pleasantly surprised. So we'll hang that up in the bedroom, pretty soon, get a round of a wall to keep this up. And the last thing on my agenda is, we got an email from the CP Rail. On November twenty-fifth at ten forty-five PM, the holiday train, the holiday train will be here. The annual, the annual holiday train.
That's Friday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they asked that we have somebody from the food, food tank, St. Patrick's Food Shelf there, because their annual check of one thousand, if they give to the food shelf. If you've never seen it, it's quite a, quite a spectacle. And that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. Just a couple items on my agenda tonight. First, I'll make a motion to request an executive session to discuss personnel. I'll put that in front of the motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor of Oat Town.
Okay, the second item on my agenda is, I'd like to mention, like to thank Sue Shinbear and Mary Rasko for the work that they did on the Peg Huckrow gazebo on Lake Street. Trustee Baker and I pressure washed the gazebo, and they did the staining, and trustee Baker also helped with the staining. We made a donation, trustee Baker and myself bought the stain and all the supplies, and they did the labor. They did a nice job with screen, with a nice red color on the floor. It came out real good, and we did it in memory of Peg and John Huckrow, so I wanna thank everybody that helped out regarding the gazebo. And the last item on my agenda is, last Thursday, the mayor and I traveled to Syracuse, New York for the Independent Energy Efficiency Program. And it's part of the board, we're all on the board, there's a, it was about thirty-five of us in attendance. And it's very important for the people on the village board to realize that if we're gonna belong to the municipal electric and be part of energy efficiency, someone from the board must go to these meetings. So it's really hard to ask Brian Pelkey to go to these, these meetings. The mayor's done the majority of the heavy lifting in the last few years, and they're looking for somebody to contact here on the village board when the mayor retires in the spring, so keep that in mind. And it's very important that we try to conserve energy, it's a good sign to our children and our grandchildren that we're trying to save energy and keep our power rates down. So I thank the village for allowing the mayor and I to go to it. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Baker?
The thing I have is, our ice will be ready for the thirteenth of October and ready to go. It's looking really nice.
All you people that wanna skate, get out there and go. That it?
That's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Trustee Roberts?
I just have a couple things. First, I'd like to congratulate John Bullnail. The Rosas Point Dodge Memorial Library was selected to be featured in New Dealicensing USA's Check It Out newsletter. Now, this letter is distributed nationally, and it will feature our programs, the number of pages.
of patrons, materials circulated and elsewhere at the, at the library. So congratulations to Donna and the entire Library Board and staff. Their hard work is noticed and appreciated. That gives us national recognition. Any recognition, any pre-recognition we can get is good for us. The other thing I got is I received a letter from the Library Board. I think you all have a copy. Please be advised that the Rosas Point Dodger Memorial Library Board, Trustee's is recommending that Kathleen Woodward be hired effective October third, 2011, as a library page. Ms. Woodward is highly qualified for this position as she is a certified elementary teacher with a master's degree in reading. Ms. Woodward also indicated that she is very interested in assisting the library director in programming. This hire would not increase the number of hours allocated for the library page position. Currently, the library has two library pages and two substitute library pages. The Library Board feels that hiring one library page to staff the library during evening and Saturday hours would benefit the library and its patrons, providing consistent staff during the hours. Additionally, this hire would alleviate scheduling difficulties and conflicts. Currently employed library pages have agreed to put on a substitute list to be called in the event that the director and newly hired library page are not available. Thank you for your support and, and... So I'd like to make a motion that we hire Kathleen Woodward to be a backup page for Ms. Bullnail. And then the remain, the remaining pages would be as substitutes.
I thought Donna's mom was in there.
I'm sorry?
I thought Donna's mother was in there.
Yeah, the, the four pages are Pat Racine, Sola, Sola Mary Marnes, Jerry Favreau, and Geraldine Bullnail. They would still be substitute, they've agreed to be substitutes as a, as a secondary backup, I guess you want to, want to say. So Kate Woodward would be the initial backup and then the others would be substitutes to those two. I'll second that.
Motion by, Trustee Roberts, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any other in Scottville?
Just, just keep in mind that you're not going, we're not going to change the number of hours, we're just going to reallocate them to those five individuals.
To the one individual.
Well, to one or you remain four substitutes.
So what hours will she be covering then?
She will be the first backup to Donna and then if she is not available, then the four backups will, one of the four backups will, will step in.
Okay.
So basically, instead of having four backups, we have five with one main backup person and the other four would be backup to the...
Don't miss one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Generally, Kate would be used for Mondays and Tuesday evenings, but I'm not scheduled to work on Saturdays. I don't work every Monday and I don't work every Tuesday evening and I don't work every Saturday by Saturday my hours because of outreach and, and grant writing and things like that. So she would be the primary person to work those evenings and Saturdays. If I'm off during the day, doctor's appointment, I'm from sick and Kate's not available because she's a substitute teacher, if she's not available, then I would go down the list and call. Okay. Today, I had an appointment, Pat Racine filled in for me. So that my mother and Jerry Favreau considered substitutes, so they would remain on the list. Right. And Sola and Pat agreed to be put on the list as a substitute that I would call when needed. Okay. So that's how it would work. Okay. That way we have one person that I know will be there evenings and Saturdays and not have to schedule for four or five people, that that one person will be there. And then if she's not available, then I would call the people.
You put that in front of the motion?
Yes, I did.
You second? Move by Trustee Roberts, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any other discussion? There being no, all those in favor, vote unusual sound of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the only thing I was asked to do is the Fire Department Auxiliary is sponsoring an annual Halloween party at the fire station on October thirtieth. And they request the Fire Department to give fire truck rides and that, I believe, needs authorization by the Village Board.
Motion to authorize the auxiliary to have a better Halloween party.
With fire truck rides.
With a fire truck ride.
Second. Move by Trustee Baker, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote unusual sound of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Roberts. And Trustee Penfield.
Couple of things. First of all, on the agenda, we received back the final form of the local law addressing the work that we had done, I guess, probably during the months of August and September to finish up the amending of the property maintenance law and also the zoning code. And we had the people, the ladies from River Street here that did the presentation and we have received back the final copy from Tom Renee. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for a public hearing on the local law amending chapter ninety, property maintenance, and then also repealing the existing chapter one-twenty zoning law of the code of the Village of Rosas Point and establishing a new chapter one-twenty zoning law of the code of the Village of Rosas Point.
Second. Move by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
No, just though, in case anyone asks, I think that Tom had to word it this way in terms of kind of repealing what's replacing it because we had all of the changes that the zoning committee made over those couple of years that, that the committee met and then also the other changes that we had the public here, or the public meetings on that River Street had used to update the code. So just in case anyone asks, we're not completely throwing out the old zoning law. We are just revising it, but that was the way that Tom had ordered it from the back to the Village.
Excuse me.
So everything is still there, it's just been updated.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote unusual sound of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that public hearing will be at the next meeting on the seventeenth.
I hope so, yes.
Yeah. And then the other thing I have, I know it was in our packets and I know that Mike Petrow briefly addressed this in response to a question at the Planning Board meeting last week. The, I have the Earth Science Engineering Letter that's marked as an agenda item. Apparently, he has contacted the owner of Alley Plaza at eighty-two Champlain Street and our village engineering firm has done a review of the building and has sent that, I guess, Mike has sent a copy of their results to the owner of the property. And Carol, I'm not sure, is he looking for authorization from the Board?
No, he said, after I had already done that, he just said there, there was nothing to do.
Okay.
Now, at this point, because I asked him...
We're just waiting right now, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Right, apparently they have twenty days for the owner to respond and then the, the chapter seventy-two applies.
He called Mike this morning.
Oh, he did, okay.
And he said there's nothing he can do because the insurance company has not done their investigation. So I've asked Mike to contact his insurance company because everybody else has written off on it. The investigation, the entire investigation was done. Now, I want to know what the insurance company goes, that we don't know.
Right.
Because if we don't stay honest, that thing's going to be there until next year.
Exactly. I'd like it out of there before Christmas. I mean, I'm more concerned about the, has a suspect environmental history leaking underground storage tanks?
That's got nothing to do with it, really. No, it hasn't. I've talked about it.
Wow.
They put that in there in the letter, that any time you do it, especially with any of that.
Yeah.
So that has to be checked.
Okay. I'm more worried about doing more environmental damage than what it looks like. I mean, it looks terrible, but it'll have to be torn down.
Right, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Carol?
Just that I recently attended an ICAhn Fall Training and again, it was very interesting and I would like to thank the Board for allowing me to attend. It's very informative and it's a lot of good information to bring back, so, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Our Sen?
I have a couple of things. First of all, I'm pleased to announce that we received a refund of three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and three cents from Exelus. The refund was a result of medical cost inflation that was lower than expected for the calendar year 2010. Never had that before. And the other thing is, I just want to remind everybody that who hasn't paid their taxes, October thirty-first is the last day to pay their taxes before they turn over to the county on November first.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the meeting to the public. Anybody willing to address the Lord may do so. If not, thank you and we're, I entertain a...
I just forgot one thing too, I'm, I'm sorry. It just kind of goes along with what you said about the award and what Brian said about the volunteers and, and the donation from Buckworth and Brian with the gazebo. I think, I just want to say that having been, I know my time on the Board right now has been very short since July, but having been part of the, the revitalization plan and having been on the Board at that time, I think it really is representative of the effort of the entire village. I think the Board, I think the volunteers who, who live in the village and work so hard on behalf of the village, I think the village employees in every department who have supported that and have really, you know, taken on additional duties perhaps that they wouldn't have done before to make that happen. And I think, I just think it's a really positive for Rosas Point and I think it really was an effort by a number of different parties and I think it really represents an award, really, for the whole village. The volunteers who helped, the people who are involved with the sort of government and, and certainly the, the staff that we have and the support we've given, I think it's been really all part of what went into getting that. So I just guess I would like to say thank you to all of those people.
Thank you, Carrie. Intertain a motion for recess.
I'll give you that motion.
Move by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Baker. We're in recess at twenty-oh, five minutes and that's it. So if you have to go, you better hurry.
Eat water, you want to eat?